All right, well, it's one o'clock. And I want to welcome everybody who is joining us to the Old Stone House annual meeting here on Zoom. Let me scroll back up. My name is Leela Nordman and I'm the new education director here at the museum. I will also be hosting this Zoom call. So a few things before we get started, just want to make sure most people will be muted as attendees. And that the screen you're seeing is actually my screen, so I will be able to control it. You won't be able to from home. But another thing to think about is if you want to ask a question, it's best to scroll down to the bottom of your Zoom window and you will see either a chat function, which we all can see once it's pulled up, or a question and answer function. And those are two great places to write down your questions, especially since Agenda Seven or Agenda Item Seven is where we can share out a lot of those questions. But there are places where we will be voting and places where, again, we can share those questions. Certainly, if I see them in the chat or in the question and answer, I will raise my hand and get the attention of the speaker so that we can ask those questions at that time. But what we first need to do is I need to hand it over to Drew Bush to practice, do a practice vote before we get started. So I'm going to stop sharing my screens so that we can see each other.
So welcome again, everyone. We're really happy to have you with us this year for our 2020 annual meeting. And what I'm going to do is first talk to you about how we're going to vote. Since, of course, we all have to do this virtually this year, which makes it a little bit harder. But I'm first going to talk to you about it and then we're actually going to do a practice vote so that when we get to the real votes during the meeting, we can do that pretty quickly and have it flow nice and smoothly. Just one thing to warn you, I am going to be tabulating the votes. So if you're, you know, if there's a pause for a little bit during the meeting while we're voting, just be aware that that's just me counting everything up. So don't get alarmed if that takes place. The first thing I wanted to make sure everybody knows is that in order to vote, you have to be a member for the Old Stone House Museum. We're excited if there are other folks here that are watching our meeting. We're definitely appreciative of you being here and and welcome you to take part in all of the meeting, but you do need to be a member to vote. You won't be able to vote in those parts. And the second thing I wanted to mention is that I know some of you may be actually sitting in a room with your Zoom screen with two people who are members, or maybe three, who are all planning to vote. And we definitely welcome that as well. So what I'd like to do now is actually just pause for a minute. And anybody who is sitting in your house in front of your Zoom screen with more than one person who's a member, if you could please chat in the chat box and please just put your name and the second person's name. If you have a third person, please put the third person's name as well. But that way, we just want to make sure that our vote count is all nice and accurate. So if you're on your computer, as Leela said, you can scroll to the bottom and you can use that chat function and tell us if there's two people with you. If you are on an iPad or a smartphone or something like that, your chat function might be at the top of your Zoom screen, but you'll see it wherever you mouse over to see that little chat box. So I've got one person who's responded. If there's anybody else that has multiple people voting in their Zoom, please just let me know. Now's the time where I'm going to give you about another 30 seconds. And Barbara, yes, I can see you. We're going to, the panelists will vote separately from the attendees. So don't worry, I can definitely see you there. But if everybody, I'd say another 20 seconds. If you're trying to get to your chat button, please put your name and the person of, and the other person who's at your Zoom screen with you so that we know how many people are voting in your household. Okay, so I've noted down two different folks for two votes. I'm going to give you another 15 seconds. So anybody else who wants to make their way to that chat button, please do so now and let us know if you have more than one person in your household who will be voting. We'll say 10 seconds now. Okay. Okay, thanks, life. I see that it's just you. All right, perfect. So I think we've got everybody who's going to be a double vote. If anybody's listening and hasn't been able to chat that to me yet, just please do so in the next few minutes while we review how we're going to vote. So the way our vote is going to work is Mike or some of the other board members may call the vote. So what I'll ask first is that we have all of our yay votes. And then we'll, we'll ask you to actually go to the bottom of your screen and click to raise your hand. And when you do that, I'll be able to see if you've raised your hand. So don't do that yet because I'm going to first ask, Mike, can you please call our first test vote for the, all the yeses on our test vote?
Okay, if everybody who's having a good time today, please indicate so by either raising your hand or saying yes.
All right, so keep your hands up. We still have a few people who haven't raised your hands in our attendee list. So now's your chance to vote. Please make sure that you're mousing down to raise your hand. I want to make sure everybody can do this. So we've got almost everyone should be in the same place where your chat button is or your Q and A button. Still waiting for a few people to raise their hands. I hope everybody's having a good time today.
And Drew, I think for the one person calling in, they may not have that capability. So we may have to check with them individually.
That's, that's true. So I was going to talk to them in just a moment.
Okay.
But okay, I'm still looking for a few peoples. I'm just going to read your names. If you haven't raised your hand yet, Anne Lawless, Barbara Postman, Daniel Pellerin, Irene McDermott. I just want to make sure you guys can all raise your hands so that we can see when you vote. Lindy and Dave.
I think Lindy and Dave chatted, maybe.
Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry, I got the, you can always chat if you feel like you're raising hand. And Walter and Roger, are you guys able to raise your hands, please? All right, well, I think we're getting most people raising their hands here. You people may have stepped away from their computer, so you will see. All right, and then the second part was, is that I will ask our panelists or our board members to raise their hands. So if all of our board members who are voting, can you please raise your hands now? Great. Okay, perfect. So I think most, almost everybody has it worked out to vote. If you're having any trouble raising your hand, please just chat with us in the chat window. You can always vote that way. For the two folks who are on the phone, the best thing for you guys, since you can't vote on the phone, is if you want to be able to email me your votes as they happen, I will keep track of them and make sure that they're added into our vote tally. My email is just assistendirector@oldstonehousemuseum.org. So feel free to email in your votes as we're going through these votes. If this had been a normal vote, we would have then called our nay votes and then our abstentions. But I think everybody is able to vote. So I think the one thing I will remind you is now, please put your hand down. You will have to put your hand down after you vote so that we can make sure we get the next out. And it looks like everybody's able to do that. Great, so I'm going to turn things now over to Molly and to Mike, excuse me, to Mike Murphy to kick off our annual meeting.
Thank you, Dave. And I would like to now officially call the annual meeting to order for 2020. And thanks to everybody for taking part. It's certainly a most unusual year, as we all know. Just think with this wonderful weather, in most years, we would be gathered at the Old Stone House, having a wonderful time, eating some good food, visiting the museum, bidding on pies and all kinds of wonderful things. So hopefully, once this meeting is over, you can go and do something where you enjoy this wonderful weather outside. And again, I'm very pleased to welcome you. We have a wonderful group of members, members of the society, a great board and of just a tremendous staff. And I would now like to ask Molly, our director, to introduce our staff to you. And then she will present her annual report. Molly?
Thanks, Mike. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for attending the Old Stone House Museum's annual meeting this year. My name is Molly Vacy. For those of you who may not have been able to meet in person yet, I'm the executive director of the Old Stone House. I want to first extend a warm welcome this afternoon to the members of the Board of Trustees. Hi, everyone. The members of our newly formed advisory board. I've seen a bunch of your names come across. Thank you so much for being here. And our staff members. I'd like to take a moment and introduce our staff today. Returning staff members are Bob Hunt. I saw Bob's name come through. Hi, Bob. He's the associate director of operations. Donna Carusa, she's the field trip and camp director. And then we've also been really fortunate this year to welcome three new and exciting museum professionals to our staff. And I'd like to take a moment and introduce them. You've met already Drew Bush, our assistant director of marketing communications and development. Our associate director of collections and programs, Mahela Nyberg. She's also on the call today. And our associate director of museum education, whom you've all met, Leela Nordman. And just a quick side note, but important, Leela's position has been underwritten this year by the A.D. Henderson Foundation, supporting early education initiatives in our state. On our agenda today, it includes summaries of some of our most exciting projects in 2020. Before I speak about these projects, I want to first acknowledge where we all are in the midst of a pandemic, cultural, societal, environmental strife and an uncertain future. And the Old Stone House remains strong and vibrant. And I credit the people who have worked and continue to work on its behalf. The energy of these people should not go unnoticed. And I want to recognize a few of them right now. Jane Greenwood, an absolutely essential member of the Old Stone House community in numerous capacities, as a board member and a volunteer. Jane, thank you for your service. Catherine French, who has worked so many numerous hours, particularly in development over the last year. Catherine, thank you. And Carmen Jackson, whose energy and diplomacy have ensured that Alexander Twilight's story is at the forefront of everything we do here. Carmen, thank you. Members of the executive committee and the board, and the board committees all, who have given countless hours to the oversight of this museum. And volunteers like Mary Lou White Wood and Joan Hukinen. Joan's on the call today, who continue to volunteer many hours of research and providing tours even through a pandemic. And then, of course, the staff, who works well into weekends and nights to keep this organization moving forward. So thanks to an amazing group of people that keep this place running. And I also credit the extraordinary, extraordinary gravitational pull that the OSH seems to intrinsically have. And I can only imagine that Alexander Twilight is still at the heart of that. And moving right into the overview of 2020 at the Old Stone House, I can start with some of the major initiatives that we've worked on this year, marking a pretty amazing and unprecedented year for us. The Alexander Twilight Initiative, first and foremost. And Leela, would you mind sharing the slides? Just I'll wait, there's a few pictures that we have to go with some of these initiatives. Thank you. 2020 marks Alexander Lucius Twilight's 225th birthday. And as you may know, Mr. Twilight was the headmaster and minister of the Orleans County Grammar School through the mid-1800s. He was a community and educational leader and a man of incredible intelligence and will. He was also African-American. And this year marks the first of many celebrating the legacy of this important local man. Please join us also in celebrating Mr. Twilight's story and birthday on September 20th this fall. So we are planning a big party for Alexander Twilight this fall. The Historic Recreation Trail Project has been ongoing since last year. It celebrates the Old Stone House in its entirety, encircling the full 60 acres of historic agricultural and natural Vermont landscape. It's almost one mile in length and interprets numerous aspects of our natural and human history in Orleans County. The trail was just finished and built by the Youth Conservation Corps of the Northwood Stewardship Center, many thanks to the State of Vermont's Recreation Trails Program for a grant of $22,000 to help support this project. And we will be celebrating the grand opening of the trail as part of Alexander Twilight's birthday celebration, also on September 20th. The CCC Camp 55. The Old Stone House has recently adopted the CCC camp in the Willoughby State Forest as a future project. And the purpose of our work there will be to provide access and historic interpretations of the site of our local chapter of the Civilian Conservation Court dating back to the 1930s. The OSH will work in tandem with the State of Vermont's Parks and Recreation Division to realize this exciting project. We want to extend a thank you to Pam Kennedy and Mary Ragnow for their energy as they've committed to the project in behalf of the Friends of the Willoughby State Forest and their elite leader, Gene Haig. Gene is certainly missed. We hope to do, do justice to the project. Early childhood education, excuse me, with generous grants from the Doing and Henderson Foundations, the Old Stone House educational staff, under the guidance now of Leela, is busy developing an early education program, complete with curriculum kits and lesson plans based on our unique collection. Kids Fridays take home activities that occurred every single Friday of the summer and will end this coming Friday, have also had scaffolding, scaffolded section for our youngest students offered as well. In the years to come, Old Stone House staff will continue to partner with local preschool educators to develop a comprehensive and much-needed early education program that will help our local teachers more thoroughly meet their humanities standards. We're pretty excited about that particular project as well. And lastly, the Giving Garden. We have doubled the footprint of our kitchen garden under the wise leadership of Jane Greenwood and our AmeriCorps members. The produce from this garden is being distributed to our local food pantries. And when the produce becomes, when it becomes more than we can handle just for our local food pantries, we're going to be working with Green Mountain Farm to School to distribute food across the county as well. And there are numerous other things, smaller projects and initiatives going on at all times. But I want to stop there and give Mike the chance to vote and approve administrative reports. Mike?
Thank you, Molly. Hopefully, everybody has received and had a chance to review the annual report as presented by the director, our finance and treasures information, and the secretary's report. And with that in mind, I would entertain a motion, perhaps, Dave, if you wouldn't mind putting into motion the approval of the director's report.
Move to approve the director's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Carmen, I think I heard, I saw your second, but you were. Okay, so I have a, thank you. And motion and a second to approve that report as presented. And you've also had a chance to read through it. Apologize for the fact that we've got so few people who can be part of this in terms of the audiovisual aspects. But it's a little different way to proceed and we'll do the best we can. The motion is before you. Are there any questions about the motion?
And if there are for attendees, please chat with us in the chat box if you have a question or in the Q and A, and we'll make sure they get asked.
I'll give a second for that. But any questions or observations on that report before we take a vote? Has anything come through, Dave? Or Drew, I'm sorry?
You're muted, Drew. It doesn't look like anything has come through at this time.
Okay. Okay, if there are no comments, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, raising your hand, any way you can to, so that Bush can take note of your vote.
All right, so I'm seeing some votes. If you're in Zoom, please scroll to the bottom of your screen and put your hand up. We're still waiting for a few people. Or if you're on a tablet like an iPad, please to the top of your screen and raise your hand. And if you're, if you're having trouble with the hand function, you can always chat in our chat screen. All right, so waiting on a few folks at the bottom of our attendee list. Okay, I've caught everybody else. So we're going to give you another 30 seconds to vote if you haven't yet. So it's just, I'm looking at the people at the end of the list. Barbara Postman, Daniel Smith, Mary Ragnow, Richard Kirshner. If you guys want to raise your hands, if you can, or put us, put a chat in the message. Yes, Nan, I can see your vote. I see your comment as well. Thank you.
Drew, I don't know if it's true for others or not, but I don't see the option of raising my hand unless I go to participants. And then that option comes up.
If anybody's having trouble again, please, please chat with us. Okay, so we're going to close the vote in 10 seconds. So.
Okay, that's just those in favor. You have that tally, Drew?
I will in just one moment because I'm Yep, I have, okay, I have those in favor.
Okay. Any opposed to that motion? Please indicate again by raising your hand, hollering loudly, whatever. I think you did pretty well, Molly.
Okay, I have all of our, I have all of our nay votes recorded too now, Mike. So if you want to do the abstentions?
Any abstentions?
So make sure you put your hand down if you were voting nay. Okay, a few more seconds for any abstentions. All right, Mike, so I do have the abstentions now. And the motion carries for the director's report.
Okay, were there any nays or abstentions that need to be recorded by the secretary?
We had, actually, I'll be sending Barbara a record of all the tallies after the meeting.
Okay, wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you. Next report we have is the treasurer financial report. Let's see, Barb, would you be willing to put that motion on the table for us?
Yes, I would like to motion that we accept the treasurer's report.
Okay, and is there a second to that motion? Carmen, perhaps you could as one of the individuals who's available.
As I can get to my unmute, yes. I will, I will second that motion.
It looks like Alan Yell also seconded that motion.
I'm sorry, who?
It looks like Alan Yell also seconded that motion.
Oh, okay. Oh, Alan's on. Thank you, Alan. So Barb, are you getting that information?
Yes. You know, there are, Mike, there are some questions in the chat about voting that I think we should answer. There, if Drew could say again, who is eligible to vote and who is not?
Yep, that's right. So if you're not a member, you're not eligible to vote. And so thank you, Daniel. And to, I believe it was Richard, who also pointed out that they're observing, but they're not members. So thank you, we've recorded that you're on the call. But if you are a member, you can vote. If you're not a member, please stay on with us and observe the meeting. But please don't vote when we're voting for these couple of motions here.
But you do not need to be a trustee to vote. You only need to be a member of the Old Stone House Museum.
That is correct. Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, and there's a lot of financial information that has been printed. And hopefully, you've had a chance to review that. Are there any questions about that report before you vote on the motion to accept as presented?
And now's a great time to put into your chat or your Q and A if you have any questions on the report. We're not seeing anything so far, Mike.
Okay, great. If there are none, all of those in favor of accepting that report and the motion to do so, please indicate by raising your hand or indicating in some way so Drew can count your vote. These would be all those in favor.
So we'll give it another 30 seconds. If anybody hasn't made it over to the button to raise their hand. We'll give it another 15 seconds. So please, but haven't clicked on the raise your hand button yet. Okay, so we got about 10 seconds. Five seconds. All right, we're going to close our, our vote. And if you can please lower your hand now. And I have that tally if you want to do the nay votes, Mike.
Okay, so all of those against the motion, voting in the negative, please indicate by raising your hand. This as it applies to the financial report. I realize this is all a little tedious, but it'll make things pretty official. And obviously, we're trying to be very transparent with all of this information as well.
So if you're, if you're voting nay, please mouse over to the hand button or send in your email. And I have been getting emails from folks, so thank you for sending them. We'll do 20 seconds again. So if you have a moment to click there. We're down to 10 seconds. And five seconds. All right, we can close the nay votes.
All righty, any abstentions on that vote? Are you seeing any there, Drew?
Yep, we have one abstention so far. I haven't checked my email. All right, so I think we'll close the abstentions there.
Okay, and the tally of that vote?
That vote carries two to one with one, excuse me, 24 to one with our two email voters, so 24 to one with one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much. And the final report requiring a vote is the secretary's report from the last annual meeting. And Barb, were you indicating there's an addition to that?
At our last regular board meeting, we did not take a vote to, there were no corrections to the secretary's report that I presented for the June 17th meeting, and I presented those at our regular July board meeting, but there was no vote taken. There was some mix-up with this consensus, not consensus agenda, but what's it called, Molly?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. We did not take a vote, and yet we do need a vote to approve those minutes. They were presented and there were no corrections. So we only need, and this is just a loose piece of business that needs to be taken care of to vote, board members to vote to accept those minutes of the June 17th meeting that were presented at the July board meeting.
Okay, and you feel those need to happen by the current board as opposed to waiting for the next board meeting?
Yes, I think that's what we had decided.
Okay, well, then I think what we'll do is to place that a little later in the meeting, if that is okay. And the motion that we would need right now is just relative to the report for the annual meeting 2019. Will that be okay?
Fine with me.
Okay, Carmen, perhaps you would be willing to put that motion on the board for the acceptance of the 2019 annual minutes?
I make a motion to accept as presented the minutes from the 2019 annual Old Stone House meeting.
Thank you. And is there a second to that motion? Dave? Or is there somebody, have you seen anybody with a second, Drew?
Looks like Lucinda is seconding that motion.
Oh, great. Hi, Lucinda, thank you. Is there any discussion, questions regarding the annual minutes as presented covering the 2019 annual meeting? If there are none, all those in favor of accepting those minutes as presented, please indicate by raising your hand.
Thank you. There you go.
All right, I was muted there. We'll give it another 15 seconds for people to vote. Barbara and Carmen, I've gotten your votes, but other board members who are our panelists, please don't forget that you should vote as well. For our attendees, please keep voting. We'll give you another 10 seconds if you haven't gotten over to click on the button yet. Make sure you raise your hand if you're voting in favor. And Mike, did you remember to vote? I didn't see a hand for you.
No, usually I wait, and just in case there should be a tie.
Okay.
Or there's a need to create a tie.
Okay, so just last few seconds for our attendees to vote. Okay, so we'll
Okay, all of those wishing to vote nay to that motion, please do so now.
And please put your hand down if you were voting to the previous question.
So this would just be all the nays?
All the nays now. And we'll give it another 10 seconds if anybody is trying to get over to that button. Another five seconds. All right, I'm not seeing any more votes, Mike, for the nays.
Okay, are there any abstentions?
And please put your hand down if you were just voting nay. All right, so I'm recording our abstentions. We'll give it another 10 seconds if anybody's still trying to get their mouse over to the hand vote. All right, we can close that voting as well, Mike.
Okay, thank you very much. And Barb, let's get back to you for a minute on the minutes that you feel need to be approved by the board members only before this board changes membership. Could you explain that again, please?
Yes, at the July regular board meeting, I presented minutes from the June regular board meeting. And of course, we had begun that consent agenda, and there was a mix-up as to whether or not we needed to vote on individual reports. But I believe that the secretaries and treasurer's reports both need to be approved officially with a vote. That's what we had decided when we discussed it after the meeting. So and at that meeting in July, when I presented the June minutes, there were no corrections to the minutes from June. However, we did not have an official vote to accept them. So that's what we need from board members as a piece of loose business is to approve those minutes officially.
Okay, great. And I will take responsibility of that because I think I remember discussing this with you at the time, and I simply forgot to indicate that we needed to call that vote. So just board members, and this will help clean up that what Barb is referring to as loose business, so the new board will not have to deal with that. If I could ask somebody to put a motion into place to approve the July board minutes?
Actually, it is the June board minutes, June 17.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was the July meeting approving the June minutes.
I move that the board approve the minutes from June of this year.
Okay, thank you, Carmen. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Dave, approving those minutes as presented at the July meeting for the June meeting. All board members in favor of that motion, please indicate by raising your hand. Dave, you'll have to give me that tally. I can only see
I had seven, seven in favor.
Okay, and those opposed to that motion?
So please, everybody who's already raised their hands, put your hands down. If you're a board member, please vote now if you're opposed to the motion. So this is just for the board of trustees. Okay, I've recorded our nay votes, Mike.
And any abstentions?
So please put your hand down if you have already voted in the nay. Okay, I've recorded our abstentions as well, Mike.
Okay, so I heard you say the seven, which, you know, certainly is the majority of the board, so that motion will pass. Am I correct?
That's right.
Okay, great. And Barb, thank you for remembering that and letting us get that taken care of. Okay, I believe we're on the agenda where, Molly, do I need to turn this over to you now?
Yes, thanks, Mike. I, we're on recognition of outgoing members. I'd like to offer a special recognition of our exiting board members this year. Thank you to Mike Murphy, Barbara Thompson, Noble Francore, and Irene McDermott for their many years of service on the OSH Board of Trustees. And this is especially true for one individual, Mike Murphy, who is one of those very essential people to the Old Stone House. And what distinguishes him further is that he's been involved in essential ways for some 30 years. His involvement has looked something like this, and bear with me here, Mike, I hope I get this right. Secretary, Vice President, President, President again, Secretary, and back to President. And in the meantime, Mike has served on a number of committees as well. Thank goodness Mike isn't leaving us. Along with Irene, Mike will now serve on the advisory board. And a thank you is absolutely not enough. So we've set up a special donation program to commemorate Mike's lifetime of involvement here, to support education and collections, two of the things Mike loves best here at the OSH. If you're interested in contributing to Mike's commemorative fund, please contact me. Mike, Irene, Barbara, Noble, to all of you, thank you. And Mike, a special thanks to you.
Molly, I messed up my screen. I have a very appropriate time, I guess. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you hear me, more importantly?
No, I did, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's pretty special, and all I can say is it's been wonderful being involved with this museum. What I've always indicated to people is that it has, it's the opportunity to be introduced to a tremendous group of extremely wonderful individuals, board members, staff, et cetera. And I sincerely mean that. And again, I'm having trouble with my screen. I don't, I'm trying to get back to this meeting correctly, and I'm not sure if I'm going to get there or not.
Oh, I can help you.
I hit, I hit the right button. I'm now back.
We're on nomination of new board members.
Okay. And maybe if I could add to that, just a special thank you to the other board members who are leaving, because they have been just tremendous to work with and thank each of them individually to, you know, in a very special way. I would like now to turn it over to Carmen to take
You're muted, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. I'll now turn it over to Carmen to put in nomination, new members for the board. Carmen?
Hello, yes. We have a slate of potential new board members, which I will read off, and hopefully you've had a chance to read their bios in the information that was previously sent. The names are Frank Carbonneau, Robin LePlant, Ann Lawless, Daniel Ian Smith, David Snedeker, Dan Pellerin, and Dawn Andrews. And they are being nominated for various periods of time to fill our board. And I would like to make a motion that that slate be accepted as read.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'd like to have those names repeated, Carmen, please.
Certainly, no problem. Frank Carbonneau, Robin LePlant, Ann Lawless, Daniel Ian Smith, David Snedeker, Dan Pellerin, and Dawn Andrews. And I can send you that list to Barbara.
And Mike, you had a second from Alan Yell and somebody else already.
Okay, great. Thank you. Would there be any other nominations for the board?
It looks like Courtney Mead. Is that?
Well, so Courtney withdrew his nomination this morning.
Just so the membership understands, the board can have up to 15 members, and that was the current intent, to try to take it to that level. So the hope is that there would be five individuals up for a position every year in that the terms served are three-year terms. Anybody can serve two, three-year terms before being required to leave the board for at least one year. For various reasons, sometimes people are not able to fill terms. So many times, there are positions that are being filled for a one or a two-year term as opposed to a three-year term. In the meantime, if there are openings during the year, the board is allowed to fill those positions. They are filled just until the next annual meeting. And that's why, you see, this year, there are seven individuals being placed before you in the way of a nomination. Are there nominations other than those presented by Carmen Jackson? If there are not, I would ask that somebody make a motion to ask the secretary to cast one ballot in those seven names.
So Catherine has made a motion, Mike.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Looks like Alan Yell has seconded, as has Lucinda.
Okay, Alan and Lucinda, thank you. Then I would ask all those in favor of the motion to have the secretary cast one ballot in those seven names, please raise your hand.
So we'll take 20 seconds for everybody to get over there and click that raise your hand button. Same for our board members, if you want to raise, or excuse me, our panelists, if you want to raise your hand in your screen or raise it on your participant window. And just asking everybody again to raise your hand, maybe just 10 seconds more here. Okay, so we'll close it there. And if you could put your hands down before Mike calls the nay votes.
Okay, all those nay votes, please indicate now by raising your hand.
So we'll take 20 seconds again for all the nay votes. Please raise your hand now if you're voting nay. About 10 seconds, so if you haven't gotten a chance to mouse over there to raise your hand, please do. If you're emailing in your votes, I am also looking at emails, so make sure you email your vote. All right, I think we can close it there, Mike.
Okay, and any abstentions? Drew, since you asked me before about voting, I would just indicate that this time I did vote.
Okay.
This type of vote, the Chair does not vote to either break or form a tie like in most motions. When it's nominations, it's a regular vote taken by everybody. So I did vote in the affirmative this particular time.
Okay.
Okay, do you have a tally?
Yeah, so the motion, sorry, let me just check my email. Yeah, so the Yeah, so the motion does carry by a vote of 22 to one with two abstentions.
Thank you. And Carmen, if you have a motion for the officers as a report from the nominating committee?
Mike, is that correct for me to do in that I am one of the officers?
Well, I will. It actually could be under the circumstances, but if you're more comfortable, I will put your name into motion as the president of the OCHS.
Thank you.
And would you put the other names into motion?
The other names are Catherine French is Vice President, David Snedeker as our Treasurer, and Robin LePlant as Secretary.
And we should take note that these individuals, although voted at the annual meeting, are from the board and according to the bylaws, do need to be board members. Are there any other motions or any other nominees, I'm sorry, for those positions? Those in favor of the motions that Carmen and I did together, please indicate by raising your hand.
So we'll give it 20 seconds again for everybody to get their cursor over to raise their hand.
Barbara, you can vote.
I actually found the button on the participant page.
Oh, okay, thank you. I haven't looked for that.
Okay, so another 10 seconds for our attendees. Please vote now if you're gonna vote. I've recorded all of our panelists and board member votes. Alright, I think we can, we can call it there, Mike. So please make sure you put your hand down now, everyone.
Whoops, I'm sorry, where are we at now? Any?
The nay votes.
Okay, I need votes in the negative for the slate of officers.
So another 20 seconds, if you can just mouse over to raise your hand. If you're on the panel, you can raise your hand in your screen too. So please raise your hand, another 10 seconds. Alright, great, so we can close it there, Mike.
Okay, are there any abstentions?
So make sure you put your hand down if you just voted nay and please put your hand up for abstaining. We'll give it another 10 seconds if anybody else wants to abstain. Alright, I think we can close it there, Mike.
Okay, wonderful. And if you can give us a tally?
Yep, let me just check the email votes. So our tally would be 23 in favor to three opposed with one abstention.
Alrighty, thank you. So that motion or those two motions carry. Congratulations to everybody. Welcome all the new members to the board and wish my very best to everybody and especially you, Carmen. I know you're gonna do a wonderful job and we'll be checking in on you once in a while. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm now a little lost with the agenda, Molly, if you could help me.
Sure. Now would be a good time for anyone to ask questions. Now is open for questions from the audience or from attendees?
I wasn't sure we were there.
I believe we are, yes. And if anybody has any questions, it would be great to see them in that chat. And I'm happy to answer anything. Just waiting.
And your questions can cover anything, folks.
And Daniel, the pleasure's ours, I'm sure. Thank you for giving us some time. Alright, a few more seconds for folks who may have any outstanding questions they'd like to ask. Oh, when are the next board meetings? Great question. And right now, we're in the process of figuring out what works for everybody. Figuring out whether or not evenings or weekends work better for some or our traditional every, every third Wednesday of each month or if we'd like to move to every other month. So that's still under discussion. If you have preference, please let us know. And Catherine's asking, how can people best volunteer right now? What do you need? That is a great question. We need help spreading the word. Right now is a time when we're trying out a lot of, a lot of new things, as you can see with our webinar. So, you know, we're trying to do a lot of virtual programming and anything you can do to help spread the word about what we are trying to run. There's pre-appointed tours that people can take, making folks members, all of your friends and families, trying to get, trying to build membership up. And then once our annual fund certainly comes to pass in September, October, we can use all the help we can get getting new donors as well. So thank you for that question.
I would like to add something. I see Frank has a question here. New board members, there will be orientations. We will be getting in touch with you very shortly and bringing you up to speed. And I also want to say to Mike, he indicated that he would be in touch with us, with me specifically. I will be in touch with you, Mike. I have some huge to fill. Not only time-wise, but knowledge, experience, relationship-wise. I will be in touch with you.
And Catherine, yes, Town Appropriations is a great place to volunteer as well and this year presents specific challenges because I think we're gonna have to do a lot of electronic signatures. So we'll be reaching out to folks for help there too. Thank you for reminding me. And then Frank, just a quick, this may be a good time to put in a plug for the dashboard. Your, as advisors and as board members, you have access to the board dashboard, which houses a lot of information as well as resources and it will continue to populate over time. So your orientation materials, actually Frank, are already listed on the dashboard for new board members in that page. And advisors, now that we have all of you on board, we will be adding and populating your page as well on the dashboard. So I will send you links to that as well.
We do have one open question on the Q and A, asking for a review on how we are dealing with COVID-19. Could we be sued if a visitor gets the virus and dies?
Yeah, that's it. And it's a really concerning question, I think, for all of our, of all the cultural organizations. We do have documents in place that are posted also on the website. And I've checked numerous times of course with our insurance company and making sure that we're covered in the event and having all the language for that coverage appropriate at the Old Stone House. It's a great question and something that's an evolving answer, I think, for all of our cultural organizations. And I'll connect with Lila, whoever asked that question. I'm also happy to send you the documents that we have regarding COVID-19 and our safety plan. And then Linda, Linda asks, I'm a new advisor and a center for the Painted Wall Preservation Conservation. Thank you, Linda. Yes, I will definitely, I actually think we know about that symposium already, but I would love to know more information. So if you're willing to share that with me, that would be fantastic. Anyone else have any questions regarding anything? And you all know where to find me too and I will certainly, I'm going to just drop my personal email here or my work email here. You can ask any questions that may come up later, certainly to me directly. I'm just gonna drop that in the chat. Great, alright, I think that concludes the question and answer time. And Mike, we are at the vote to adjourn. And before we do so, I just, I again, I again want to reiterate, thank you to everybody. Lila and Drew, thank you so much for your expertise running these. It's really lovely to have you on board. And Mike, thanks again. Mike, a little bit emotional for me is your last, your last meeting, but thank you for sticking around and continuing to support us. But thank you so much to all of the new advisors too and members and executive slate. We have our work cut out for us, but I think, I think we're on the right path. So thanks to everybody in support of the Old Stone House this year.
I would like to thank you as well and I look forward, this sounds very interesting, but some of the staff individuals who are doing a wonderful job, I've only met virtually. Eventually, I hope I can meet them as a one-on-one and have a quick chat. And with that, again, a thank you and President Carmen Jackson, perhaps you'd like to make some comments and take a vote to finalize this meeting?
I'm a bit overwhelmed really with my upcoming responsibility, but as Mike has indicated there, a wonderful, knowledgeable group of people, the board, the advisory board, the staff is, which I have had a good deal of interaction with, are outstanding. And there are a lot of very selfless people and I think that's a real big part of what we're trying to accomplish with the Old Stone House Museum and keeping it relevant. I appreciate all who showed up today and stay in touch. Don't, let us, let us know what you're thinking. In the meantime, I would like to make, I would actually ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make the motion, Carmen.
Thank you. And someone to second, please?
It looks like you have Lucinda seconding already.
Thank you, Lucinda. And with that information, we take a vote.
Go ahead and raise your hand if you're in favor of adjourning. We'll give it 20 seconds so everybody can get their mouse over there. And I see Mike's hand up. I've got you recorded, Mike. Alright, 10 seconds. Alright, I think we're good on our vote here, so we can vote, have the nay votes now, Carmen? If anybody doesn't want to adjourn. Make sure you put your hand down if you just voted yes.
Are there any nay votes regarding the adjournment?
Alright, I'm seeing no votes on that side, so just abstentions.
Okay, are there any abstentions?
I think we are all set to adjourn.
The motion has passed. Everybody have a good afternoon. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.